Twelton City Council Work Session now actually in person. So, welcome all those who are in the audience to our new facility. We're all looking forward to using this facility rather than a pole. Gives a little bit more accommodation, more room, and easier access. So tonight, we started off this evening with a bus tour. The projects that are in progress are already done with Twelton Movement Program. And now we're picking up with a update on the American Rescue Plan given to us by Don Hudson. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Don Hudson. I'm the Assistant City Manager and Financial Director with the city. And I want to give you an update on our American Rescue Plan Act monies, as well as kind of where we're at, and then a little bit on our utility billing assistance. So I'll start out talking a little bit about the funds and then go into the utility billing discussion. Go the right direction, that would help. So from our past discussions, you had six guiding principles that we have kept in front of us as we've talked about potential uses of our American Rescue Plan or ARPA funds. Aligning with your vision, one-time projects, we didn't want to start a new, some kind of new expenditure with one-time monies that was not sustainable, ongoing. Leveraging multiple funding sources, there's, when we talk about the Stone Ridge Project, that's one that we might be able to utilize ARPA funds to leverage other funding. Innovative, proactive, strategic, we've been really going at this in a strategic way, and that's thanks to your vision as well. We are talking with other entities around to see if there's any kind of partnerships or collaboration that we can use, and then coordinating with those local partners. Some of the investment areas that we've talked about in the past was infrastructure, utilizing funds for infrastructure projects. The prime example of that is a water line for the CIPA, the Community Partners for Affordable Housing Project on the south end of town, in improvements to our outdoor spaces. We want to look at potential of supporting community-based or nonprofit organizations. Assistance to households is another investment area that we've talked about. There are other programs for food, rent, utility assistance. So we thought, well, there's potential to use our ARPA funds in the future for gaps in those programs. And I will actually talk about that when we get into the utility billing assistance program this evening. There are some monies that we've talked about for small business impacted industries. Jonathan Taylor will be in front of you next meeting to talk about some of the Representative Prusak money that would go towards some business assistance. Revenue replacement and coordination with local partners are other potential avenues for investment. So turning a little bit more on some of the projects and exact ideas of projects in the infrastructure area. So as I mentioned, the water infrastructure to support the affordable housing project. We need to have a water line put into that. So we are contributing up to a million dollars for that water connection that will serve that project. Improvements to outdoor spaces. So we frequently ask questions of the final ruling on ARPA funds allows for uses of outdoor, improvement of outdoor spaces that have been disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. This provision refers to projects that are in a qualified census tract and include improving park space that will benefit the health and wellness of these communities. When I've talked with you before, we had one census tract in Twelton, and we talked about the Stone Ridge Park renovation that is in that qualified census tract. Since we've talked before, we actually now have a second census tract here in town, and it kind of runs west from the existing QCT, north of Sagard from Martin Azee. And then it goes around the Twelton elementary area, drops south to Avery, runs all the way out to Cypress, and then the northern boundary is the Twelton Road Herman Road. I actually got a visual, I cannot put this on the presentation because you would never be able to read it. So this was our kind of our existing first census tract. And then this is the whole new area that is now part of that. So we could potentially look at some of the projects that might be within that area. And so as we go along, we can have some of those conversations. And to give you a little bit of that, so Twelton Road Herman Road here, this is Sagard. This is then it drops south to Avery, and then out here to Cypress. And it's that whole area there that is in a qualified census tract now. Pardon me? Yes, I could, yes, I could. I was trying to find it electronically today, and it happened, I had it up on my wall, so I was going to make a copy, but I can work to get you guys a copy. I was looking for something else one day and realized that we had a second.
Three-dimensional things.
Some of the other areas that we've either looked at or are in the process of doing is again coordinating with local partners, and here's again the economic development proposals is utilizing some of the Representative Prusak money. And then we can also look if there's gaps in there as well as we go forward. The county's been talking about some countywide community engagement. That would be looking at things from an equity lens. I'd have to get an update from the county where that's been, it's been a number of months since they had those dialogues, at least that I've heard. Some premium pay, if you recall, that we had some premium pay for essential workers that the council had added to the budget, when we adopted the budget this year. Affordable housing is another area. Treasury just recently, and I haven't had a chance to read it, about a week or so ago, I put out some additional guidance related to affordable housing uses for the ARPA funds. And so that's something else that we will be reviewing and looking at and determining whether there's the potential to address some items in our housing needs analysis and a group that's working on that. So we'll be looking at that here in the very near future, determining what uses for our ARPA funds might go towards affordable housing areas. And then again, assistance to outdoor and the utility assistance and kind of gaps in the gaps in the state and local programs. So let's talk about those programs. The first is the low-income household water assistance program, or LEWAP, as we refer to. That was state money that the state got for ARPA. Then they turned, created this program, sent it out to the counties through community action networks, so far as it was community action of Washington County, got those monies. And then they have distributed from there. What we have had since March in Twelton accounts, we've had 21 accounts for approximately $23,000 of assistance to Twelton residents and Twelton water customers. They do have a small amount of LEWAP funds still available, though they feel at this point that with the current applications they do have, that that will probably utilize that money. But they are still encouraging our customers, if any of our customers, to contact them and go through the initial vetting process and the qualification, because they do have other programs as well, it's just this. So anybody that is looking for potential assistance, they are encouraging people to still call and get applied. The phone number that they could call is 503-615-0771. Again, it's 503-615-0771, and that's straight to community action and now assist people and getting them good application process and potentially qualified for assistance. The second program is through using Washington County ARPA funds that was then given to Clean Water Services as the lead agency on that and in partnership with all the water providers in the county. We went through and set up a program to address the needs of populations that were most deeply impacted by the pandemic. And they use census and American community survey data to determine which of our accounts would potentially be eligible for assistance. They use their GIS mapping, so all the entities sent their delinquent reports every month, and they mapped it into these four tiers that they had created to see who would be eligible. So they told us which of our customers would be eligible for this assistance. There were four tiers that were utilized using these census blocks, and they were created for populations with higher representations of three areas. Thirty percent or more people of color, household income below $45,000, and household income below the poverty level for one year. There were 39 accounts that were identified in Twelton for about $22,000. We are going through, there was a 14-day opt-out period, because the potential is you'd have somebody that was in a census block that may not have qualified. They may be on the delinquent list for a reason other than COVID, or they may not clarify into these items. So there was a 14-day opt-out period. We sent letters to all accounts, let them know that they had the potential for being assistance, and then they had to pay to opt out. I know of at least one account that we were contacted by them and said, hey, it wasn't COVID-related. I had this other issue going on, and I just hadn't paid in that timeframe. Please take me off the list. So now they're going through, and anybody who has not opted out, we will credit their account for that amount. There are some gaps still in our programs, obviously. We have approximately 146 accounts, about $83,000 of delinquencies currently. And you can see that that was just not even, not quite half the accounts were identified under these two programs. The remaining of those, we know are not all people impacted by COVID, but then there are. How do we reach those people? So if the council is, wants me to look at, how do we come up with a local program that might be able to reach those that fell into those gaps? I would be very happy to look at that, I can come back with a proposal, or I can put together a program, just let you know what it is, and we'll roll that out. The second program that I would like to throw out this evening, and I'm still working on the exact pieces of it, but I think this is how it might work. One of the issues that I've always had with these assistance programs, even going back to the CARES Act, is we have landlords who pay their bill, they're not delinquent, but then they're turning around to the renters and charging them for those utilities. So we may have someone who has been impacted by COVID, who is behind on paying their landlord, who then could have an issue of potentially being evicted. Then that's not case. So how do we reach those people? One avenue that I've contemplated, and if council is amenable to this, is something I will fine-tune, we'll put together the letters, sending a letter to the landlords and asking them to identify for us people that are on those, that are impacted, that may be on that list. And maybe we can reach those renters that do not have the ability to be part of any of these programs. That's been a few ways I have thought through how do we reach renters that may be impacted that are delinquent for other assistance programs. So I'd like some discussion where we're at the end of this to see if that's something that council desires for us to look at. Speaking of delinquent accounts, just to give you a little reminder, I was in front of you in September talking about our delinquent accounts. We, in April of 2020, we suspended late fees and shut-offs for non-payment, and we have not started that back up. You can see from this list that the majority of the entities around us have started shut-offs and late fees. We have not yet, and I want to have a little bit more of a discussion about that this evening as well. Just a reminder of what we do, we still send out a delinquent notice every month, even though there's no late fees and there's no shut-off. And we have this language, and it's hard to read here, but we have the language saying we understand that, you know, there's this pandemic, people are impacted, we're not going through shut-offs and so forth, and we ask them to contact us. You know, we want that communication so that we know if you're being impacted, how could we potentially help? There are a number of people that aren't paying because there's not a shut-off. There's no hammer there. And then there are a number of people who are impacted, who are having issues. And so how do we go through that? So yeah, I was in front of you back in, in September, and we talked about whether or not to start back up shut-offs and door hangers and shut-offs. At the time, council was supportive of the concept, but wanted to wait till we had the assistance programs in place and wanted to make sure there was good communication. At this point, we have exhausted, so to speak, the state and local, the state and regional assistance programs. Those are in place, they have kind of run the course, so to speak. So now we're back to, you know, where are we going to go? The planned outreach that we talked about back then as well, and council asked for, is we're putting information on our website, we would put information in and on our monthly bills. And then the goal of communication is communication with those delinquent customers. And if they are still being impacted, you know, how can we help them? And then those that, you know, are just not paying because there's no reason for them to pay. You know, how do we, you know, communicate with them as well? So we really want to communicate and find out if there's delinquent people that are impacted that, you know, we can do a payment plan. I mean, there's a lot of options that we would like to go with, for those customers. And so we're proposing, if council is amenable to that, is to begin shut-offs at the end of September, after we get this additional communication in place. If we can't get through all the outreach, we will put it off then until October. But I think we could do that as well. As I said, we have about 146 accounts that are on the delinquent, that would be on the shut-off list right now. We are typically down in the, sometimes down in the single digits of how many accounts shut off. So there's not that communication happening. And so I know those numbers are high right now, and I know there's a lot of reasons why. So we'd like to get that communication in place. At that, I'd be more than happy to answer any of your questions. Thanks for listening in a cool environment.
Thank you for the presentation and for putting all the thought into it. I personally, as far as talking about a plan, I would like to approve the plan, rather than just each on a plan. I had a couple of questions. One was, for the reasons that people, have you identified reasons that people are not receiving funds? That could receive funds, are there, is there a list of reasons for the water bill?
I think some of the community action, I don't know, I can't remember how, I don't know how much, what the communication was. I know they were inundated across the region, but we did have a number of accounts that were. I think there's two reasons, I think, that people have or have not gone to community action. One is it's, I wouldn't say an onerous application process, but it's a fairly significant application. And then there's the qualification and the income levels. Some people don't want to go through that process. On the local one, as I said, it was determined under census blocks, and that's how the county decided to run the program. And so there are, a lot of our accounts are in the census blocks that were identified. And so that's why I'm saying, kind of how do we reach those people outside of those blocks that were not identified in a clean waters program? That we might be able to help some people. There are a lot of people on the list that don't need this, I need that assistance, but I know there are some out there, how do we reach those?
Right, well, yeah, that's what I was wondering about. And then I do know, and it's through another organization, but I know Tiger, for instance, has a water shut-off prevention program that's independent of community action network. I do remember when all this was going on, and they were trying to do the best they could do during this whole time, but the whole thing, you'd have to call in, and then you couldn't get through, and people would take days and days and days to try to get through. So to do something smaller scale and focused towards our community, to me, sounds like just a really wonderful idea. And we just know that homeless prevention and getting these bills paid is just so much better than trying to get people out the street. So whatever we can do to kind of help with that resiliency, I think is a great idea. My other question was around the census tract addition. Why, why wasn't that new part there? And what changed so that we have that additional census tract on the map?
I would have to look up to see how the Census Bureau, what changed in those areas, or why that got added. I don't know enough about how someone gets on, how an area gets on the census tract, and then what changed to get that?
I know that has its income, and there can be different equations around cost of living and income. So I'd be very curious in that information. It's important for us, for me, to know if we have a swath of people that are having a less affordable time with life than they did in the past, and that the dynamics are changing between, you know, with the income gaps.
Okay.
There's people that are left behind, and they're left behind in a bigger way every, every year. It's been a progressive conversation since I was back at social work school way back decades ago. So I want to see how it looks in our community.
Okay.
I think that was all I've got. Thank you so much for thinking about it, and I think that ARPA money is really important. I do want to think about too resilience here on climate, because just being on the bus without air conditioning, you think about all the people that are living without air conditioning. And when I talk about putting water bottles near bike paths and, and bus stops, and people are going to need that kind of thing, because people die of exposure and extreme heat. And I think we're just going to keep, we know from the research now that we're going to keep seeing more and more above 90 degrees and above 105 degrees days, so.
And I'll see if I have what research I can do on the second census tract, and soon I can find.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great, great information, thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you, Don, very informative. What is that phone number that you provided earlier? And then the other question, you said there are about 100, thank you very much. There are about 146 accounts that are still outstanding from the freezing bill.
So if we were to do shut-offs today, that's the number of accounts we would have on the shut-off list.
What is that, do you have a number, what does that equal to dollar amount?
About $83,000.
That, I needed, I just wanted to know that.
That's a prep.
Um, yeah, first of all, I really liked your idea of reaching out to the people that live in the apartments, because if those bills are getting passed through to them, they're probably the least likely able to pay. I think that's a really great idea. And my question has to do with your new census tract. And so I'm wondering, like, of these ARPA funds, so is there still room to designate other projects within the ARPA funds? Because it seems to me, and I could be wrong, and I know we're us this year, but it seems to me that Nyberg Creek Project would fall right within this. Yep, halfway, and that's definitely a way for people to access, like, over on 65th over, you know, to shopping and stuff. And I think it would be a really great thing to have that be part of the funding for that. And that was about it, but I'm not sure how I feel about, I guess. So with the shut-offs, I guess is my question, could, would you be sending out, like, shut-off notices, but then also telling them there's assistance if they need it? So basically, the people that aren't paying, that really can, would have to pay up. But the people that can't, there's other ways for them to get help?
Yeah, so we would be communicating, what I would ideally like to have is if we are doing our own local program, have that advertised as well and have that in there. So I want to make is, whatever we end up doing, is a simple application process as possible, and it may be as simple as a checkbox, and have you been impacted by COVID. There are restrictions under ARPA that we would have to still have in place, but making it as simple as possible for people to get that assistance and so forth. So we would communicate that as part of our process and, you know, kind of ongoing. We communicate that if you don't pay within a week, then you are subject to shut-off. So we already have that, you know, communication that's going out there. There's, they do have a number of touchpoints before we would get to a shut-off, and so we would look at what communication we have as part of those, and what we could add to it to make it better.
And the simplicity of the process would be greatly appreciated.
I have a follow-up question on what council that was saying. So you're sending out these, this is separate from the community. I just want to make sure when I convey the message, I'm conveying the right message, and I'm not confusing them. So when I, I am, I'm thinking of speaking to a group about this specifically, the specific shut-off, same shut-off so if the community action assistance is separate from what the shut-off of the water is, right? This is the assistance. So if they need to contact, say, for instance, it goes to the landlord, the landlord pays a bill or whatever, but this funnels that bill to the renter, and the renter might not know that they're, the landlord's getting the letter from you that says, hey, if you need assistance, or is there something that we can do? Here's how you pay that, we can help you. But that's not going towards the renter. So my goal is to let the renter know that there is support for them, if that happens to them, the landlord funnels that bill to them. How do they contact, who do they contact, or how can they get someone that they can talk to about that?
So the proposal, and I'll give you, send something out to you that exactly what the steps would be. What I envision is we will communicate with the landlords, find out who is just passing it on to the tenant. Some is just part of the rent, and there's nothing really we could do about that, because it's not divided out. But if, but what I've heard is that there are some landlords that, they get the water bill, they divide it up, they send the tenant a bill, and those are the ones, so the communication would be to the landlords, find out who those, those landlords are. And then if we can get a list from them, or how we can communicate so that we can communicate directly, or communication through them to the people who are, who are delinquent on those accounts, so that we can get things in their hands and identify it. That's the part that we'll have to, you know, do some research and find out how do we communicate, and whether we're going to get the landlords to get it to, and that's the piece that's. Yeah, figuring out how to reach those renters. But the idea, at least that I've been thinking through, is communicate with the landlords, see what we can find out, and then develop the best way to communicate with the individual renters. So I don't have all the answers right now, it's just something that was recently in my head, and wanted to see what the council thought about using ARPA funds for that.
Thank you.
To me, it's motivation for the landlord to resolve those accounts. Why wouldn't I cooperate if I can resolve those accounts quickly and not have to harass my tenant?
But what if they're delinquent in this city, or they're, you know what I mean? The landlord is from another state, you know?
So I don't have the exact answer, but it's something I will look at, given it sounds like we have enough. You tell me for sure, but I've seen a lot of nods, that it's worth more research to identify how we could do that.
How to get, yeah, how to get the message to the actual people.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Country Saka.
Um, so I'm in support of the researching those gaps and finding out who is falling through. My only concern is that potential shut-off starting in September seems like we have enough time to do all that research and outreach and get ahold of everybody when we're August 8th already, and then September seems right around the corner. So I'm just concerned that if we come to a consensus of September, that that might feel too close. Or how, I guess, maybe a good question would be, how did you come up with that?
Well, first part of August, I said, a lot of the, the renter assistance is not an issue as far as timing, because most, that program I'm talking about, the landlords have paid the bills. So those are ones that would be part of that. On the others, it's a matter of just getting the communication to those accounts that we have, and it's maybe as simple as a letter, it's nice to find out who are still impacted, to let us know. And so my first thought was, yes, we do have time to communicate, if there's items that we're talking about on the communication piece, get into place in the timeframes, I'm thinking they will. But if I communicate with, you know, Megan on some of the communication, when she's back vacation, some of those, it may get to be where I'm a little nervous about September, and so I would push that off. I don't want to rush into a shut-off, just be shutting people off. I want that communication, the goal of, sorry, shut-off step again is getting people to communicate with us so that we can be helping those that need it, and then the ones who don't, we can start getting in compliance. That's Brooks.
Thanks, I'm in agreement with that as well, especially for turning around funds too. And I don't know how we identify the gaps and where people are not paying. So I'm still very curious about that. The other thing I'm thinking about is if we do something like this in an ongoing way, if it's something that makes sense that we do in an ongoing way of having assistance for people with water bill issues in our localized way here. I am curious about working with CIPA, since they'll have the service center at the location of the housing, for the housing unit, and having case managers. From what I understand, I think they're able to also, people from outside of, people that are living there.
people from outside of, people that are living there are able to utilize those services over there, so there might be an opportunity around case management, um, services, especially education around bill paying. Um, any identifying barriers to um, to, to why people are having trouble, is it economic, is it organization, is it just understanding how things work, is the language barrier? Um, and I know that what we've done in the past, and I think too, for, for the city, that was a good idea, if there's a community meeting around that, to have pizza or to have food and make it a place that people can come and learn and share and get help about why they're not paying their bills instead of making it like a checkbox, um, and where we're not really identifying what's happening with the individuals in place. So if there's, you know, if there's lots of people in similar locations and apartment buildings, um, if there's, if there's a clubhouse or a community room in a way that we could bring peace and have a conversation and identify the needs assessment, the barriers to what's happening, so we get better understanding. And to me, that does take a little bit of time, and it might just be a really good time to do it, especially with these big, this, these swaths added onto our census, those are, that's very concerning, so I think that, that I'm, I'm curious too with the census, um, we have the area, but do we have numbers of people that have been added population-wise?
There are statistics on the Census Bureau's website, I, I don't have those.
That would be something I'd be curious about, how many more people have been added to our um, in-person or in-need um, population in our yeah.
Other question?
Oh, and then my one other thing.
We're running out of time.
Okay, I'm just going to say one other thing, as far as when we're talking about ARPA money. Um, I know that there's been action around the state, I'm not sure exactly all the policy around it, but I know air conditioning has been a thing where there's more, um, that you're allowed to have air conditioners no matter what apartment you're in. And I think there might be a way of thinking about too with air conditioning, if we are looking at ways of spending ARPA money around, um, especially with these huge heat problems that we've been having, so that we can have programs around air, air conditioning and heat management.
Any other questions? So it sounds like based on my hearing, uh, that we want Don to go forward with reach out to landlords, you know, working with them to solve the, you know, when they're directly billing their tenants. Also reach out to those hundred and forty-six accounts and see what we can do to work it out. Uh, just like you said, what I heard in the past was that, um, it was very difficult to get ahold of Community Action, a lot of hurdles, which is a big pain in the butt. And if they find out this is very streamed, uh, very easy to do, check a few boxes to qualify, uh, that we might resolve this, because I got to think the cost of showing someone's water off and then later turn it back on. Uh, that has an associated cost, I'd rather get these resolved, you know, ahead of time, and that goes with the whole process. So, does that sound okay to anyone else?
Yep, so if they do, if you ever did community media, I'd be happy to.
I think we got it. All right, uh, with that, we have about five minutes left, so we're gonna uh, on the agenda tonight, uh, I have Council Brooks is up for Pledge of Allegiance. We're also up for a public health announcement. Um, we don't have any proclamations, I see. Uh, anyone have any questions on the consent agenda tonight? And so we've got uh, about four minutes uh, for fire breaks and the like. Uh, we'll reconvene back here about at seven o'clock and have our first in-person city council meeting, about what, two and a half years, three years?
Yeah.
But a lot, so we got to seven o'clock.